Thanks for joining us today here at the Casper Star Tribune and we will go ahead and get right into the questions. Do you have the time available to complete the duties of the office? And what do you think the time commitment for a job like this should be? And we'll start over here with Mike.
Yes, I do have the time. I'm retired, I just recently, as of May fifteenth, sold our... We had a business, myself and two other friends. And they were the ones kind of encouraged me to run for this. And yeah, I believe that time is well spent. Although, I'll admit, it's almost a full-time job to be a commissioner. I was a state legislator and I thought, oh, it's just forty days every other year. No, it wasn't. It was almost a daily job with another job. So, yes, now I have the time. I feel comfortable that I could do the job.
If you want to go ahead and briefly introduce yourself.
Oh, okay, this is in reverse order. My name's Mike Gilmore. I've lived in Casper for fifty-one years. I came here right out of high school. I have married my girlfriend at the time. We've been married forty-nine years, have nine grandkids, two children, and they all live in Casper. And so, we're kind of a big family and that's my claim to fame, I guess.
Rob, we can start with an introduction and then you can go on to the...
Okay. Well, my name's Rob Hendry and I'm currently a county commissioner. I'm a third-generation rancher out west of Casper. About ten years ago, we started a dirt contractor business. And I build locations and reclaim them in the Encana field at Manita. We have two boys. Been married, my wife Leslie and I have been married thirty-three years. We've got two boys and they're actively taking over the management on the ranch. It's a family deal, so I'm still involved a little on the business side and Leslie is too. We've got one granddaughter. Being on the commission, if you're in leadership, the chairman or vice chairman, it's more of a job than a part-time job. The rest of the commission is there to support those two guys and we all have boards that we serve on. And so, it's important to be at those boards, like airport, health, the hospital, Board of Trustees, airport board, let's see, there's library board, Vista West, there's some joint powers boards. So, there's quite a few other boards that you sit on as well. There's lots of emails. Things are done in emails and so, there's lots of contact that way from the state association. I also serve on the Board of Directors of Wyoming County Commissioners Association. The one thing that's taken up some time now, and Forest is doing a lot of it, we have commissioner expertise in this state, they call it, and they passed the law down in the legislature. That means that we can talk on equal footing with the BLM and government agencies on the things that are affecting all of our lives in Wyoming. Like sage grouse, like the Clean Water Act that they're trying, the EPA is trying to do, those kind of things in these EISs. So, it's quite a job. And I do have the time. I'm slowing down at the ranch. The kids are taking over and I've enjoyed doing it.
Yeah, now Terry, we can start with a quick introduction and then let you get into the answer as well.
Well, my name is Terry Wangarder and I've been around Casper since I was four years old. I'm now in my sixties, as much as I hate to admit it, but it happens. But anyway, I have nine brothers and sisters. We was all raised in Casper. We all went to Casper schools, St. Anthony, Dean Morgan, NCHS. And I was on the city council for nine years and I've been on the county commission for some time now, twenty years. I have lost a couple times. I just barely lose and I'd come back two years later and be the number-one vote getter. And yes, I definitely have the time to be a county commissioner. I have the enthusiasm and the energy. And something that Mr. Hendry just said, that I, all county commissioners have an input in what goes on down the county commission. So, I just do not support the chair and the vice chair. We all have an input. And you know, no matter where you go, no matter where you go in this community, people say, is it a part-time job? Well, it's supposed to be, but no matter, you know, I get around town quite a bit. I was in sales all my life. And no matter where you go, you go off the mall, downtown Casper, people stop you. They want to know what's going on or they have a concern. And like Rob says, emails are very important. People call and I invite those phone calls and I always get back to them. And I've been on just about every county board liaison, on the city board liaisons, that there is. Right now, one of the major boards I'm on that I really get a thrill out of is CNFR board. And I've been on that for several years and that brings, we figure the other, here last CNFR, we sat around the table and talked about it and we figure it brings eight to ten million dollars into this community. Of course, we're all proud of our local fair and rodeo, Central Wyoming Fair and Rodeo. But I have the enthusiasm and I'd be honored to people both for me.
Next question and we'll start with Rob. Have you attended any meetings of the commission recently? Of course, the answer for you is going to be yes, so I guess then. What would you say about some recent moves that the commission has made? Anything you'd like to kind of reflect on or look forward on? How would you evaluate the commission's performance recently?
You know, my attendance, basically, that's a good answer to that, is my attendance record. And I have been to other meetings. Probably got one of the best attendance records. There was a couple issues. There's one ongoing right now, we're working on the long-range plan for Natrona County. And you know, they're talking about ninety thousand people here, right closely down the road. And by two thousand and forty, probably a hundred and ten thousand people. That means that we need to start looking at roads through the MPO and start looking at the ways we're going to get people around town. We've got a west belt loop that's coming up. That's going to take people around and be able to lessen the traffic, maybe down through downtown, and lessen the traffic in other areas. We've got light projects and if you don't think we've got problems, traffic problems, try to go through CY. I mean, it's going to be nice when it gets done. It really is. And they're working on all those lights. A good example of how to bring a road in that's turned into a pretty good industrial road is Six Mile Road out to the Bishop Railsburg. And now, YDOT is talking about putting a light out there just west of Ghost Town because there's an increasing amount of traffic that goes through that intersection and it's kind of problematic at times. So, there'll be a light out there. And those are the kind of things that we need to kind of plan for. And that document also, we'll have some public meetings around the community here in October. I think September, late September, October. Chairman's got that figured out. So, we'll be talking about that. We always have issues that come up about zoning. There was one up at Wardwell the other day about a zoning issue. And we first denied that. Came back in and he had some new information and we revisited that. And the people up there really gained, I think, from that. He has talked about putting buffer zones between the housing and that new commercial area. Talked about putting asphalt roads in. And so, I think that's pretty important to have those discussions. Repeat the question, please.
So, the overall question is, have you attended any meetings of the commission lately? And of course, you know, you'll answer differently than somebody who hasn't served time on it. But so, I guess the question for you would be, characterize the commission's moves lately and decisions. Is there anything you want to reflect on? Is there anything you do differently? Where are you guys at today?
Well, of course, I've attended meetings. I mean, I'm very good, like Rob, attending meetings. And they call a meeting, I'll be there. One of the toughest issues for me was just the other night, and Rob brought it up, about the Salt Creek area. Now, it came up to us, we have a developer that wanted to put in, it was rural residential area, agriculture, rural agricultural area, excuse me. And he, there's thirty acres up there and he wanted to, of course, change his zoning and light industrial. And the first night it came up, it was a no vote. The majority voted no. And then, a particular commissioner brought it up again the next time around and we voted in favor of it. But let me tell you what happened in the meanwhile. The developer called me because I have coffee with some of the residents that live up there in the Salt Creek area. I don't drink coffee, I drink tea. But anyway, he wanted me to, one of the major individuals was, that was an opponent of it. He wanted me to go to Wyoming and set up a neighborhood meeting. Well, I called this person two or three times and he just wasn't ready for this neighborhood meeting yet. So, finally, Keith, the developer, called a neighborhood meeting on his own. And in the meanwhile, I went up there and I walked around the area and I sat by the Salt Creek Road to look at the traffic problems and all that. But regardless what happened there, we had a, it came back to the commission. And the ones that was against it was very vocal. And of course, the developer was very vocal on the other side. But because we made that developer come back, he's, he came back with the berms and the asphalt road and the trees and all that. So, because we voted no the first time around and then we reconsidered in the meanwhile, by the time we voted no and reconsidered it, he went back and did a little bit more work. But it was tough because I had friends on both sides of that issue. But so, you know, you just got to make some decisions. And knowing that some of your decisions will not be popular with some people. But you just, after you hear both sides of the issue, you just got to make a decision. Thank you.
And Mike, talk about your attendance at commission meetings recently and then since Salt Creek Highway has already come up, maybe offer your opinion on how that was handled by the commission.
I haven't attended a meeting of the commission for probably two years, year and a half, I guess. When I was working, I used to attend them. I'm retired from YDOT. I spent forty years as a project manager and we would have to go to the commission to request plant sites, et cetera. So, I had a lot of years back when I did that. I haven't had to do that in a long time. You hear both sides of the Salt Creek story. What I know about it is what I read in the paper. I actually have, I had someone call me, knowing I was a candidate, and actually asked me why their road never got graded into, I believe it's Blair Lane. I'm not sure. There's like three or four roads on that come off of the Salt Creek Road that they say never gets any attention. Well, I did a little research and the truth is, those are not county roads. They are roads that developers put in and they had homeowners associations some forty, fifty years ago. And of course, the people live there now and knew nothing about that. They just, you know, those homeowners associations went broke. So, they never get bladed or maintained by the county. So, those people probably have a right to complain because they're taxpayers. And the one person that called me in particular said he knew that a county motor grader was going out on a private road somewhere. Well, I believe that probably the, that's in the spirit of good citizenship, the county doing that. And maybe they need to get out on Blair Lane and those other roads once in a while. And I know there's a budget reason why they don't. I understand that. You know, I come from a different environment where YDOT, we had a right-of-way fence and we was never allowed to get outside that right-of-way fence even if there was an atomic bomb ready to go off. So, that's, but as far as my attendance at commission meetings, I guess I'm being in this forum with two incumbent. There's not a lot of reason for the average Joe to show up at a county commission meeting unless something's wrong and then they show up in droves during the old car fiasco with, out on Eight Mile or whatever that road is. Yeah, I attended a couple of those meetings as kind of a... I don't know what you want to call. I went there because I was an old car guy. I was in that business. I didn't have any old car storage anywhere. It was just the idea that I wanted to see what was going on and I knew the people very well that were involved. So, your original question is, I know I don't attend a lot of county commission meetings, but I would attend all of them if I was elected. I never missed a meeting as a legislator. I'm on, serve on two boards in Natrona County now and I don't miss meetings there either, so.
Terry, we'll start with you. Are you in favor of the one cent tax? And if it doesn't pass this time around, how would you, as a commissioner, reduce the capital budget to accommodate the reduced income?
Well, of course, I'm in favor of the one cent tax. You know, it's been going on since the early seventies, mid-seventies, this, the one cent fifteen. If it does not pass, we're going to be in a world of hurt. Especially, we'll manage the county if it does not pass. But we're going to have to make some cuts. We're going to have to, you know, look through the books and see where we can make these cuts. But I'll tell you what, these little towns, you know, we have six municipalities in Natrona County and these little towns, these smaller communities, really depend on the one cent for infrastructure. And what we have done with our one cent, you know, we bought some motor graders, we bought some sheriff's vehicles, just to name a few. There's quite a bit of what we've done with one cent. But you know, we bought some vests for the sheriff's department, bulletproof vests, just to name a few. But anyway, of course, I'm for one cent and I would hope the people out there would vote for it. You know, it's one of those things, compared to other cities, you know, we have five cents right now. And many other cities across the United States, as you will, don't have quite a bit more than five cents. So, I would hope the people of this community would continue voting for it. I can remember when former city manager Ken Erickson, back, way back in the seventies, when he actually lobbied for it. It started under Ken Erickson's administration. That's when I was first on the city council. So, I would hope people would vote for it, so, thank you.
Mike?
I think the one cent does way more good than bad. You hear the, there's a certain group that are always opposed to any form of tax. But you talk about a tax that has, if you look at over the years of what the one cent has done, it's done remarkable things. So, I've always supported the one cent. I personally vote for it every time it becomes an issue. Is there, the original question, I'm assuming, was what would happen if it doesn't pass?
Yeah, how would you, as a commissioner, reduce the capital budget to accommodate for the reduced income if it doesn't pass?
I said this the other night when I was at the library. As a legislator, I got elected the year the state went broke. So, the governor came to us and said, we don't care what you guys' pipe dreams are, what you want in your counties or hometowns. We've got to reduce the budget, you know, just an across-the-board five percent. Well, that's, you know, I think that's the commission's job too, is to tell each of the agencies, police, et cetera, road and bridge, that I know it's going to be tough, guys, but we want your budget reduced by the amount of the one cent that we're going to lose. And we'd have to live with that. And it would be an awful thing, you know. I don't think the county has got any major flaws right now in what they do with their money. I certainly would appropriate, as a personal issue, I'd appropriate a little more money for a boat dock at Pathfinder. But you know, other than that, the county is doing okay with what they have. And it would be a tragedy to lose that one cent. Probably more so for the city than the county.
I support the one cent. And I think it's really important for the whole county and all of its communities. Specifically, how the county would have to operate if we lost the one cent. In our regular budget that runs the sheriff's department and, you know, road and bridge, the county clerk, treasurer, all of them, we only use one cent money in those budgets. So, it's not going to be devastating to how the county runs. What it will affect though, is we'll have to find money from someplace to buy equipment. And it helps us buy graders for the county road and bridge. It helps us buy equipment like trucks and, you know, vests and stuff like that, the extra goodies for the sheriff's department. We also use it for special projects. We helped Midwest do their community center. We helped them and didn't pay for all of it, but we helped them. And our money, they leveraged that to get a state grant to help them as well. The community center and the fire station up there in Midwest, both were benefits of some one cent money. It would affect the kind of work that we're doing on roads and I really want to work on some roads. And we need, we need to grade them more and we need to gravel them. The grading more is in the budget, but the gravel sometimes isn't. So, we've spent, oh, I think it was a couple of million in one cent, this, on one cent fourteen on roads. And most of that went, we did chip seals out on our blacktop roads and some gravel. And I'd like to, this next one cent, put a million dollars a year in and really gravel some of these county roads and mag chloride them and get them in good shape. I think that's, that would be my priority, you know, for this one cent. But like it was stated, the smaller cities really rely on that to help run their city. And that's one of the most important things of the one cent for smaller communities. One thing I like about a one cent or that kind of a tax is the people coming in from other communities, buying stuff at the mall and buying trucks here and buying cars. And a lot of times, that helps our one cent here in Casper. So, it's not just the people that live in Natrona County help pay that. And I think it's great. What the projection is, is three point nine million for the next, was about three point nine for the county side this year. So, the projection on out, we've made it about three point nine per year for the next four years if it passes. So, you know, that's a lot of niceties that people have in Natrona County.
We've already alluded to roads, in our county's roads so far today. But in starting with Mike, what's your assessment of our county's roads right now?
Depends on which ones you drive on. I think they have like eight hundred miles of roads and some are in pretty decent shape. The Casper Journal did a pretty extensive article about the upcoming master plan. And actually, in that article, they said that this influx of people really wasn't going to affect the roads. Yet, I can't imagine asking one person, what do they think of the roads? They're going to say they need work. And so, I don't understand that, but sometimes what consultants tell you and what the reality is, is two different things. Using like the mag chloride and graveling roads, getting them up to a certain standard and then keeping them there is a never-ending maintenance process. It's not going to go away. The money needs to get put into the county roads. I don't, like I say, I have a pretty extensive background in highway. Forty years working for YDOT. Understand that roads don't fix themselves. That pothole won't go away unless you have a crew out there working on it. So, the overall assessment, having not driven every single road in the county and doing an annual survey, I would assume there's some that really need work and others that a little brush up with a blade is fine and maybe shooting some chloride on it. Or there's another way to pave a road that's inexpensive. It's not as expensive as a normal pavement job. And it's like the road into Pathfinder off of, off of two twenty. That road looks like it's a paved road. It's not a paved road. It's a road that was oiled. It's called inverted penetration. I worked on that road with the McMurray brothers and then we actually gravelled the road, shot oil over the top of it, put a little more gravel over the top of that and then shot another lift of oil. So, the pavement's only like half an inch thick at the most. And but it's held up for, I'm going to say, going on thirty-five years. In the winter, when someone digs in it with their snow chains, they knock a hole through it and someone has to come out and patch it. But that's a, that is way cheaper way of building a highway or a road, a county road, than going out and doing the entire process of ripping it totally out and doing all the dirt work. And you know, you're talking a couple of million dollars a mile anymore for certain standards. The county standard is less, so. But I'd say a paved road is going to be about six hundred thousand. And there is better ways and I would bring that to the county commission, methods that I'm sure haven't been discussed.
Rob?
Well, the roads, I've driven almost all of them and live on a lot of them in the west end of the county. I know all of those really well. And a lot of times, the main thing is they need, they need graded and they need graded in a timely manner. And we work on that continuously. A lot of those roads, we'd like to gravel and that's where that one cent comes in. If we can get a hillside out there, don't make a great big huge project out of it. I think we can gravel so much a year and finally get them done. It's pretty expensive, like's been said. I think to completely put a base down and then put an overlay on some of the existing highways, we've got a hundred-plus miles of blacktop. And we've chip sealed some of them, but some of them really need an overlay of asphalt. And you're talking eight hundred to one point two, depending on the project, and per mile. And boy, it's expensive. You just, our budget's fifty-three million and, you know, forty, forty-four of it, forty-five of it is stuff that we can't cut into to do those kind of things. So, I think it's really important that we get out there and we start doing some of this gravel work. We've got more and more subdivisions out there. And while the roads in the subdivisions are dedicated to the public, the roads getting to those subdivisions sometimes are county roads, so they're becoming an increasing amount of traffic on them. And those are the roads we need to mag chloride and get them so that they can stand the pressure.
Well, we got, what Mike and Rob said, I certainly go for a chip seal, gravel more. But we've been, I've been going to these one cent meetings where people have tried to, where we took a survey of what the people of the county want more and roads was the number one, roads and roads and roads. And the people that call me, it's all about roads too. So, what we have told our superintendent, Mike Hagler, we said, the county roads are number one. But if you have time, go help out some of these other roads that are public roads. There's a difference between county roads and public roads. We take care of the county roads, but the public roads just once in a while, you know. And of course, it's, we have to maintain these roads and we got to maybe in some areas, expand the county roads. And I'm certainly all for that. With the next one cent, one cent fifteen, I want to spend quite a bit, and I know Rob does too, we want to spend quite a bit of money on roads. That's the livelihood of the community. I mean, if you don't have decent roads, county roads, I mean, how are you going to get around? Regardless if you're manufacturing industry or what, you need roads. Regardless if you're manufacturing industry or what, you need roads. And of course, the rural residents certainly need them. So I'm certainly behind putting more cash in the roads and doing whatever we can for roads. So rather chip seal or graveling or whatever. And I'd just, I'd be for more, spending more money on that.
Okay. And and kind of, kind of to wrap things up, and and Rob, we'll start with you. Just, you know, with the competition this year for 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 the commission seats, you know, talk about, talk about why you, why are you the best fit this year? And again, Rob, we can start with you to to make a closing statement.
Okay. This would be the closing statement, too, right?
Yeah, yep.
Well, I'm running, this would be my third term. And so I've got the experience of being on the board. And when I first ran, my priority was roads. I mean, I wanted to get in there and get them done. But you soon find out, when you're in the chair, that things are a little different. The first term, we, we were pretty well bogged down. We were talking about a courthouse. And and that takes money, and it takes money away from those nice things you can have. You have to spend that extra money on the courthouse and getting that done. And that was a kind of an unfunded mandate from the state of Wyoming. They said you will have a courtroom for each judge. And so had to do it. That was the way it was. The next term was kind of filled full of juvenile detention. My, my take was that if you didn't like our juvenile detention, then stay out of it. You know, don't show up. But of course, that didn't go over too well. And and the state of Wyoming soon told me that, and that was when I was chairman, just after, that that wasn't going to cut it. We needed a new facility. And so the state did help. They stepped up and and Governor Freedenthal helped us with some money. But that takes up time and and money and a budget, so you can't work on those roads. So we're getting to the point where now, finally, I can maybe really start working on roads. And I think it's important that you have somebody on the commission that understands roads. And living seventy-two, seventy-six point two miles away from the county courthouse, I travel a lot of county roads and and do business on county roads. We ranch out in the western into the county, and and we use those roads out there. And so I know them like the back of my hand. And I think that's important to have on the commission.
You know, I've always been involved in the community. And I'm rather scouting from Cubs to Explorer Scouts, JZs. Civics was my, my best class in school. I was an intern out in Washington, Tina Run Collier for about six months. Community involvement has always been my big thing. In fact, the other night at the library, I showed everybody a check that I got when I first started with city council, it was ten dollars a year, and I still have a couple of those checks. I kept them for nostalgia purposes. But yes, I've always been involved, and I enjoy people coming up to me and asking me questions. I'm proud to be a county commissioner. And I know what needs to be done in this county. I want to, you know, and like I said, and everybody agrees, roads is number one. And we've had some pretty congressional situations come up, like the courthouse, like the, like the library, as much as I hate to mention the library, but only because it went down a couple of times. But, you know, we have an old library building there that needs to be, health and safety is number one. The engineers came out here a while back and said, well, to fix that library up, get a sprinkler system and then a couple of fire escape doors, it's got some asbestos in it, it's going to cost the county eight hundred thousand dollars. Well, do we, I guess we're going to have to put it in because we got to take care of the citizens who use that library. But I mean, that's just one scenario. And then there's the the juvenile detention center that took away some money from the roads and everything. But I, my family, we grew up here. My dad owned a very successful business in town. I tell everybody he was in the oil and gas business. He ran a gas station. Well, that's oil and gas. But anyway, but anyway, my dad was always very community-minded, too. And so I would hope that people would vote for me. I know I've been around for some time. I take this job very seriously. I don't miss meetings. You call a meeting, I'll be there, unless it's a ridiculous meeting, a two-hour meeting where to plant a tree. That doesn't happen much in the county. I'm just kind of joking. But I do attend meetings. I take this job seriously, and I, when someone calls me, I get back with them, and I'm proud to be a county commissioner. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Yeah. My, my answer to to that, why I'm running, is also this, just community-minded. I have served on boards for a long time. It's, I always, you always want to think that you have a better idea. And that's my, one of my main reasons. I actually live in the county. I know Rob does, too. Technically, we all live in the county, but I know that rural residents have a different set of circumstances. You know, we have septic tanks and our own water wells, and you don't just turn on the faucet, you got to go work on the pump once in a while. So those kind of things, just by living in the county, I, I, sometimes I think that maybe people aren't being represented as well. And and I, I don't hate my government. I'm not like, you know, the, that I'm just mad at government and want to, I demand change. I know that it takes negotiating and the process of getting along, and I think I could do that pretty well. I know I could. And back to roads, county roads being extremely important, I can honestly say I have a lot of experience in roads from, from the inception of the Wyoming Boulevard. I worked on that as a young surveyor, all the way to, you know, the huge interstate project between Casper and Sheridan. So so I understand roads, how they come about, and where the money comes from. And so is, is that a number-one priority for the county? I don't know. With this influx of growth, it's not just roads. Roads are the lifeblood of the county, but there's a lot of things the county does. We have a wonderful hospital in this county that the county commission is actually the landlords of Wyoming Medical Center. We can't ignore that. I know they're suffering, you know, a lot of competition right now. They're, they're spending a bunch of money to build two new clinics in Casper, I think, just because they're worried about the competition, more so than, and this is a private and personal opinion. I think they're worried more about competition than they are the need. But that's, you know, how much the county commission gets involved in that, I'm not sure. I mean, they're, they're a run-for-profit business. Their obligation is, is to treat the injured and trade for rent. So I guess my time's up, so thank you.
Well, thanks, guys, for joining us today. Best of luck and take care.
You know, one thing I'd add on the the one cent, and that's just for your benefit mainly, too, is when you talk about the one cent, we're, we put quite a bit of money in in the collection down there out of one cent to the library. And I think that's pretty important. That check, that hits a lot of people, too. And I check in my notes, I forgot to say that. But the library, this next time, I think there's almost five or six hundred thousand dollars a year we're planning on giving the library for collections out of one cent. So that's a pretty good deal for one cent.
I have something, too.
Thought of that.
Sure.
Thank you.